I call the Tuesday, January 22, 2019, regular meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And the invocation tonight will be given by Reverend John W. Cole II of Centenary United Methodist Church. And I'll ask my colleagues on councils to stand with me as we have the invocation. And then after that, I'll ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Bill Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good to see you all. I bring you greetings from Centenary United Methodist Church in Churchland. We've been in ministry since 1784, serving our community. We're currently located on Cedar Lane, next to St. Christopher's Episcopal Church and across from the Masonic Temple. But it's good to see you all, and thank you for the opportunity to pray for you. You need to know that I'm praying for you tonight, but you continue in my prayers every day. Let us pray. Gracious and heavenly Lord, we praise you and give you thanks for the many rich blessings of this life. We thank you for delivering us into a new year and for waking us today to dwell in your presence and in the presence of our beloved friends and neighbors. We thank you for the many privileges we have as citizens of our country and members of our community. Lord, we bless you for the many liberties, including our right to self-government and the right to make good and bad decisions and the right to reconsider policy and to make our common life more perfect as we move forward into the future you have promised. Lord, we thank you for the many people in our community who make service to others a lifetime commitment. Bless those who police our communities and all first responders. Bless our city employees who work hard to deliver services. Bless our health care providers and all who make healing a reality for many people in our community and city. Lord, we thank you for the rich history of our faith communities and the spiritual leaders who shepherd them. We have a special debt of gratitude, oh Lord, for the gift of school teachers. We ask, Lord, that you give them patient hearts as they work with our young people and children, and help our teachers to have tolerant hearts as they face the challenges of sometimes difficult school administrators and bureaucrats. Most of all, bless the good citizens of the city of Portsmouth who, in their productivity and creativity, make our community a special place to live. We thank you for their commitment in providing for the well-being of our neighbors and friends. Inspired by this great witness of our community servants, give to us all the spirit, all a spirit of service. Lord, help us now to act with character and conviction as we consider the business of this meeting. Give us a spirit of truth and honesty. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity, charity, and restraint. Help us to refrain from name-calling, either using direct words or through innuendo. Lord, remind us that we are servants and stewards of your good creation and authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see our humanity and the humanity of others, and even those who we disagree with. To treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor or different, with reverence that your creation deserves and the dignity you expect from us. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of every human person. I ask this on behalf of the good people of Portsmouth, confident, oh Lord, in your goodness and abiding love. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask my colleagues to indicate their presence by hitting the yes button. This is our electronic roll call. And Madam Clerk, we have more than a majority.
Yes, sir.
100% attendance. We do have the consideration of our minutes next. We have the minutes of a call meeting on January 7, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting on January 8, 2019, and we have the minutes of a regular meeting on January 8, 2019. We'll consider the adoption and approval of all these minutes in one motion. Is there a motion to...
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the minutes. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We do have special presentations tonight, and the first is recognition by not only the City Council, but our Department of Social Services. And we're recognizing foster parents. Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'd like to call Mrs. Pamela Littleheel, the Director of Social Services, in order to introduce the families that we're honoring tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Again, this is a very exciting night for us because we have a story today that's a little bit interesting. We have a sibling group of five today that was adopted by three different families. But what's unique is the relationship that all three families have committed to making sure that these siblings are raised together, that they still commune and go out and do things. So that's a real treat for us today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you, as I call your name, to please come up, and I'll tell you a little bit about what they've done. Ms. Teresa Arrington. Ms. Arrington has been fostering since 2007 and has fostered over 30 children. Ms. Arrington has adopted one child, Kayla. Ms. Arrington welcomes an infant into her home who has severe... Hold on, hold on, hold on. Go that back. And this is Kayla, right? I'm just...
Kyler.
Kyler, okay. Ms. Arrington welcomed an infant into her home who had severe gastrointestinal issues and was diagnosed with failure to thrive due to poor weight gain. Ms. Arrington has dealt with several types of trauma, including physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, as well as behaviors related to trauma and loss. Ms. Arrington became a foster parent because she genuinely loves children. Ms. Arrington has retired and wanted to use her time to give back because she understands that there are many children who need a home. Ms. Arrington would like people to know that it's important to give children a chance.
Thank you so much. And as a token of our appreciation for what you're doing to build families, please accept this basket.
Thank you so much.
Would you like this agent?
I'll do it again if I have to.
How about that? She'll do it again if she has to.
Thank you. Ms. Ebony Taylor. Is Ms. Ebony Taylor here? Okay, so I'm going to move on to Mr. and Mrs. Bell. Mr. and Mrs. Bell started fostering children 22 years ago, and although they've taken some breaks in between, they have fostered at least 20 children. Mr. and Mrs. Bell have adopted a total of four children. The sibling groups that are related to Kayla are Olivia, Jay Sean, and Malaya. Mr. and Mrs. Bell began fostering teenage girls because they found that that was a difficult population, and they wanted to be one of the people that provided homes for that population. Over the years, Mr. and Mrs. Bell have fostered children with severe abuse, neglect, and trauma. Mr. and Mrs. Bell explain that they have always had a desire to assist children and provide a loving and nurturing home. Mrs. Bell states that even at a young age, she always found herself assisting younger children in the neighborhood, and she began parenting her own children. She also provided a warm and loving environment for other children in the neighborhood. Mr. Bell was raised by his uncle, so he was familiar and grew up with other fostered children in the home. Mr. and Mrs. Bell would like to remind everyone that it takes a great deal of patience and love to nurture and guide children, especially in the foster care system. They express that so many children need loving and caring homes, as well as a sense of normalcy.
Isn't that great? And I noticed when she said "love," a special glow came across her face, that this is a family of love. And it's going to the right place.
Do I want to hold it? Okay. Oh, this is my daughter, Amanda. We got her when she was 29 days old. So we've got a whole bunch of children, a whole house full of kids.
And I'm 32 now.
I'm good.
Although Mrs. Taylor is not here, we'll still share some information. I'm not sure if she's en route. But Ms. Taylor had been fostering children since 2018. She has adopted one child, and the child is Mariah. Ms. Taylor had completed trainings, and she prepared for fostering children with severe abuse, neglect, and trauma. Ms. Taylor reports that she was already working with children in a residential setting and wanted to focus her abilities on a smaller population in order to provide another child with more love and attention.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
As a matter of explanation, the City Council decided to honor all of the foster parents in Portsmouth over this year. So again, thank you for helping to make our families in Portsmouth strong. Our next item is the presentation of special lapel pins to newly appointed board and commission members, Madam Clerk, and our Personnel Committee. Councilman Moody.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, as I call your name, if you would please join Councilman Moody at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. Mr. Ray A. Smith, and he represents the Economic Development Authority. Mr. Archie Baysmore, he represents the Board of Building Code Appeals. Mr. Charles Kalin. And Ms. Heidi Peelen, and they represent the Museum and Fine Arts Commission. Ms. Shalinda Miller, she represents the Social Services Advisory Commission. Dr. Lydia Simmons, she's the representative for Southampton Rose Disability Services Board. Mr. Stephen Cantrell, he represents the Tidewater Community College Board. Mr. Richard Calvert, he represents the Wetlands Board.
Well, we want to make sure all of you get on camera, so if you would, everybody move to your left here. We want to make sure all these smiling faces are on camera. And how about a hand for our newest volunteer, sir? We even have our former councilman volunteering already. Congratulations, Ray. On behalf of City Council and Mayor Rowe, I certainly want to congratulate you on your volunteerism. What you're going to be doing is extremely important. In fact, it's essential to the growth of our city. What you'll be doing is actually participating in that growth, and we have some amazing growth coming up that you'll be involved in. So we're excited about your volunteerism. Wear your lapel pin proudly because it designates you as a member of the Portsmouth team. And as we normally do, since we have so many, would someone like to volunteer to be the spokesman of our newest class of volunteers?
There you go.
On behalf of all of us, and I think I speak for all of us, we're very fortunate, and we take this as an honor, and we look forward to serving our community. Thank you so much.
It is an honor. Anyone else? Okay. We appreciate your volunteerism. How about another hand for him?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We have our first item of business is a public hearing, item 19-26. And will you read the caption of the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the proposed adoption by the City Council of a resolution to authorize the City Council to contract a debt by entering into a cooperation agreement or similar arrangement with, among others, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, in connection with the issuance of up to $5,275,000 in notes by the EDA.
This is a public hearing, and anybody that's desiring to speak on this matter can come to the lectern. And you'll have five minutes. If you'll state your name and your address, please. And I will open the public hearing now. And we do have one person that has signed up to speak, and that is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Public hearing 1926 is a proposed City Council resolution to contract a debt by a $5,275,000 bond note. The City Council wants to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Economic Development Authority, or EDA. Review the Virginia pilot articles on December 13, 2018, and January 19, 2017, for further information. Here's a summary from those two articles. The $5,275,000... The $5,275,000 concerns a repayment of money to a developer. All this conflict started over land out by the Tidewater Community College campus on McLean Street. The history of the land issue began when the victory crossing developers entered into an agreement in 2017 with the city's EDA. Since 2007, the agreement was amended twice, once in 2010 and again in 2013. There was 50 acres of land to be developed out near TCC. The idea came to the developers, Lucas Hospitality and the EDA, to apply for rezoning of the land from urban to suburban back in 2007. The developer went on and bought five acres of land for about $190,000. In 2018, since the city failed to rezone the land, the EDA decided to buy the five acres back. The developers were upset about the land and said they spent over $9 million, and they spent $5 million for infrastructure and $4 million for engineering, planning, and other expenses. Now the EDA wants to borrow $5.1 million from the city to buy back the land. This public hearing, 19-26, is asking the City Council for $5,725,000 for a bond note, the people's money. The article stated the money needed is $5.1 million. What is the extra $625,000 going to be used for? The people here in Portsmouth have had to deal with so many conflicts that have resulted in litigation. The people want these types of resolutions by litigations to stop. We can do it. All we need is communication. We could start the communication process by having a structure in the city where all people know who to talk to about whatever they need to manage our money. We need a finance committee reestablished. We had one when Charles Whitehurst was the City Council. We have constitution officers elected in the City Treasurer's Office and the city's Revenue Office. They need to be able to look at what revenue is coming in, what expenses are being paid. They also need to know how much money we are borrowing to keep track of all the workings of our city's finances. Having a finance commission allows we, the people, to know all about the secret deals going on in our city that involves our money. At the retreat, someone had the authority to eliminate the Municipal Finance Commission without the people's consent. We, the people, need to have the finance commission reestablished, and I would like to be a commissioner on it. We need to stop borrowing money. Being in debt has destroyed the people's freedom. Debt makes the people subject to the whims of the elected. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else would like to speak on this matter? If you do, please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Anybody want to speak, either for or against this item? This is a public hearing. You don't have to sign up in order to speak. Any other speakers? I declare the public hearing close, which brings us to our next item, which is item 1927, 19-27, which is the consideration of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an emergency food and shelter national board program grant in the amount of $5,891.50 from the Department of Homeland Security and appropriating said sum in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to assist Portsmouth citizens who have emergency shelter or utility needs.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-28, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $19,799 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said sum in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for use by the Portsmouth Department of Social Services for staff and operations.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-29, which is consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation of $100 from the Tidewater Baptist Women Missionary and Educational Convention and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support operations of the services in Tank Unit.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion that's been made. Councilman Moody, and seconded by Councilwoman Simmons. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-30, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the City of Portsmouth to enter into a cooperation agreement to provide for the payment of notes issued by the Economic Development Authority and to pledge the city's full faith and credit in connection therewith.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. We're now ready for discussion, and the chair recognizes Councilman Battle. Do you have a question, sir?
I'd like to know, it's the customer to not put the definitive figures when we're talking about full faith and credit of the city behind a particular project. You and I, we know, and the folks, citizens know the figures, but is it customer to leave it out, or do you think we should have it in the documents?
Okay. The chair calls upon Dr. Patton. Dr. Patton, can you answer any questions, please?
Mr. Battle, if you look down at the financial impact, it states the amount of...
I see that. What I'm talking about is the narrative where we're saying we're going to put the full faith and credit behind the bills that they make. Don't let California leave things not untied when we don't have the figures there.
Mrs. Spivey, would you come forward, please? This entire document becomes the record of what you're adopting.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the question is, how do the figures match up between what is needed and what is being borrowed?
Okay. Okay. Cheryl Spivey, CFO. The ordinance shows the maximum amount to be borrowed, which is $5,275,000. That is... It's $125,000 more than the land was purchased for. The difference is the financing cost. So that's the bond attorney and the financial advisor. Was that the question?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
I think what Councilman Battle is asking is, shouldn't, on the published agenda, shouldn't the amount of money be listed under 19-30 instead of just saying for the payment of notes? That's a nebulous thing on... That's a nebulous thing on this part of our agenda here. Why is there no dollar figure?
Is that your question, sir?
On the printed agenda, is that the question?
Yes.
I'll translate for you.
Thank you. You're so kind.
Dr. Patton.
I'm trying to find where... Dr. Patton, he's referring to the resolution that was read. The header doesn't have the exact amount, but the body of the resolution does, along with the attached documents. And plus, it was spelled out in the public hearing that you just had on this particular item. And it's spelled out in the body of the public hearing that you just had.
It's the whole thing, not just that little piece.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It actually comes up in various points throughout your agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I have a copy of the notice of the public hearing. This is what was advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's in that. I'm sure your concern is making sure that the public knew the amount. And what I'm hearing from both the city manager and city clerk is that it was published. And how was that notice published, Madam Clerk?
It was published in the bridges actually twice. It has to be advertised thirty days prior, and then again, within that thirty days, it has to be at least seven days prior to the public hearing.
So the public knew about this amount thirty days prior to this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? Okay, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, which is item nineteen dash thirty-one, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of city council, we have one appointment to consider. I move that we appoint Marion Jigots to the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the appointment and the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Item submitted by council members. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of great things going on, other than cold weather in the city right now. And the first thing, we have a lot of events going on at our museums with relation to Black History Month. And if you missed last Saturday with the most adorable young woman, Breonna Daniels, who was the first African-American female pit crew member in NASCAR, who was in front of the children's museum for several hours last Saturday with one of the race cars. You could get in and play in and on the race car. She was adorable, Virginia Beach gal, graduate of Norfolk State University, who was a track star and knew nothing or cared about car racing, and got into a diversity program with NASCAR and became the first, one of the first two women and the first African-American woman to be in a NASCAR pit crew. I spent an hour with her. She was delightful. Anyway, this coming Saturday, the twenty-sixth, from ten to four at the children's museum, we'll go from the delightful young woman to the delightful older woman. Ninety-three-year-old actress Dorothy Steele from the Marvel superhero movie Black Panther will host children's question-and-answer sessions and sign autographs at the children's museum from ten to four this coming Saturday, the twenty-sixth. And on the same day, from three to four-thirty, at the Churchillan branch of the library, we will have fancy footwork, a West African batamba class, African dance class with thunder percussion orchestra, and you'll learn how to do the dance. So lots of stuff going on. If you see these brochures around town, grab one. It's full of great stuff. Also, this Saturday, the twenty-sixth of January, from eleven to three, at the neighborhood facility on Elm Avenue, we have our annual Echoes of Joy event, which is a day of caring and sharing for some of our homeless brothers and sisters. There's all sorts of activity there, and there is transportation provided from all the PRHA housing communities. On Monday, the twenty-eighth of January, at six-thirty PM, Simonsdale Elementary School is looking for some watchdogs, DOGS, Dads of Great Students. Men, they're looking for you to volunteer. They're looking for fathers and grandfathers and uncles and brothers to be father figures for their students. So that's Monday, the twenty-eighth, at six-thirty PM at Simonsdale Elementary. And the last thing I'll mention is, if you know someone, if you or you know someone is affected by the federal employee furlough situation, you know we are a Coast Guard city as designated by Congress. And about ten days ago, I guess, we put out a memo on all of our social media. The City of Portsmouth, Department of Social Services, Department of Public Utilities, the City Treasurer's Office, the Portsmouth Parking Authority, and Dominion Energy all have special programs for folks who are not getting paid right now. So I encourage you to look for this document, Portsmouth Supports Citizens During Government Shutdown. There are lots of programs and people ready to help do what they can for our Portsmouth families affected by this. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ready for the next agenda item, which is report on pending items, item nineteen dash thirty-three. Mr. -- or Madam City Manager, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, there are no pending items from the city council meeting on January the eighth to come forward. However, in the box, you will have your report back to the city council.
Okay. Right. Got that? All right. Which brings us to item nineteen dash thirty-four, non-adjunct speakers. And our first speaker is Sergio O'Neil, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and the public. My name is Sergio O'Neil, and I reside in the Kavala Manor section of the city. It's interesting that Neighborhood Facility was brought up as a part of tonight's meeting. That facility has served as a recreation center for many years. It has served me, for one personally, a great deal. As I grew up in the Outobaba community, that's where I was born, and a lot of my first interaction in the city with other people was in that facility. The reason I come before you tonight is that I personally think we need to look at our recreation centers and see what can be done to upgrade them. Our facilities have been in place for quite some years, and I'm quite sure that we can all agree that they are showing some signs of wear and tear. For one, Neighborhood Facility, being in the community that it's in, with Westbury being revived, with that community being brought up and built up, I think that the recreation center should have been a part of that. You know, that site is the center point of that neighborhood. A lot of people that come through Elm Avenue know that spot more than anything else. And it's really time to look at not only that site, but all of them. Our children deserve facilities that are capable of having, hosting the different events that they are attracted to, you know, to keep them off the street. A lot of times, children would turn away from a facility if it doesn't look inviting, it doesn't feel welcoming and safe. You know, I remember when the pool was at Neighborhood Facility, and in the summer that you would go past it, that pool was full every day, all day, from the time it opened till the time it closed. Kavala Manor, the same thing, when the pool, you know, I don't know if it's still functioning. I haven't been in that site in a while. But that's another popular site. All of the sites are really popular. And our youth need something to attract them, to keep them off the streets. We have had so many youth-involved shootings and killings in such a short time that it's time for us to look at what resources that we have to bring these children back. Because at the end of the day, yes, they have parents and all of that, but at the same time, too, it's up to the community to pick, we have to look within ourselves to pick up, some of these kids don't have parents. Some of these facilities, the staff at these facilities are their parents to some degree. They look at the staff, you know, and the facilities as a safe haven for what goes on their community. You know, it's plenty of times where you see the kids out in the neighborhood playing basketball, but then they are running and ducking from somebody shooting or whatever the case might be. And you know, that shouldn't be the case. You know, oftentimes, you know, we hear a lot of people say, you know, well, it's somebody doesn't care, whatever the case might be. But I don't think it's that. I think it's that it takes the conversation to start from us as citizens to you, our elected leaders, and say, hey, let's look at how we can work together to make these things what they should be. Recreation is the vital part of a childhood development. I mean, just having that social, that facility, to have that social interaction would make a world of a difference. We can start with those sites. You know, and I know full well, you know, the financial struggles of what it takes to maintain older facilities. Trust me, that is my job, day in and day out. But at the same time, too, we just don't want to let them go by the wayside. You know, we definitely have a good thing with, I think Portsmouth's recreation facilities are very strategically located, but it's time to make them, just draw those kids in, you know, draw the neighborhood to them. Let's make them what they should be. You know, we look at other cities and what they've done to upgrade their facilities, whatever the case might be, but you know, Portsmouth might not have the grandest, but we can make the best of what we have. And it doesn't matter, you know, if it's just putting a fresh coat of paint, you can replace lights, I'm quite sure, you know, something that just has that warming effect. So again, I hope that the city council, our city manager can come together, let's start looking, our recreation department, start looking at what's in place, what we can do to upgrade these facilities, to bring, to give our citizens something to use and something to be proud of in this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Lorenzo Waters, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Lorenzo Waters. I stay in the Kavala Manor section of Portsmouth, and I have some questions to ask the council. And it concerns the casino that's coming to Portsmouth. Mr. Mayor, in reference to a news conference last week about the casino, you mentioned that there was a study done. And the three questions that I have, the first question that I have is, who did this The second question I have is, who funded the study? And the third question I have is, when was this study done? And if those three questions can't be answered tonight, I would like to ask if you could direct Mrs. Bernadette Hodge to get back with me within a week to answer these three questions. And it's concerning the casino that's coming to Portsmouth. And the three questions, again, is, who did the study? Who funded the study? And when was this study done? They are the three questions.
Thank you, sir. And I'll ask the city manager to have somebody get your contact information so we can get that information to you when you sit down. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mrs. Hope will get with our citizen.
Our next speaker is Shaquilla Werner, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name if I did. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, staff, and residents. My name is Shaquilla Werner. I live in the Long Point subdivision, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak today on behalf of Long Point and Peachtree citizens here. I also thank many members of the Long Point Civic League who joined me here today and the residents who came out to support. Thank you all. Initially, I brought this matter up at a Long Point Civic League meeting, and subsequently, I expressed my reason for concern as several councilmen and women were running for election or reelection and came to a quarterly Long Point Civic League meeting. Congratulations on election, Councilman Battle and Councilwoman Glover. Thank you, guys. Congratulations on reelection, Councilman Moody. You all may remember this being a point of topic, a discussion that we had that day. At that time, I mentioned that the Long Point and Peachtree communities had suffered significant shortfalls when it came to safety on Hoffler's Creek Parkway. I've printed for you and provided for you photos to demonstrate our residents that continuously walk in the streets due to a lack of a walkway. As you'll see in the photos, many people use this road to come in and out of our neighborhoods to include school buses, vans, cars, trash trucks, and other used vehicles. On any day, there can be fairly consistent amount of traffic up and down the roadway, and at times, traffic through these areas can be at a much higher volume. Clearly, the concern is safety. I have witnessed near accidents on this roadway, have been told about one man that was actually hit on Hoffler's Creek Parkway, and I have personally had to drive in the grass or make hasty stops to prevent hitting a pedestrian that I could barely see walking in the street at night, all because there is not a safe way for our families to commute back and forth down Hoffler's Creek Parkway. I'm sure there are others who are here today who have witnessed something similar. The facts are, Hoffler's Creek Parkway is a little more than one-third of a mile long. It takes the average person approximately twenty minutes to walk the entire length. Multiple people walk this roadway to includes parents with strollers, children with parents, teenagers, senior citizens, and runners, and other pedestrians. There is idle and unused land in the middle of Hoffler's Creek Parkway and also land on both sides of the street on Hoffler's Creek Parkway. And lastly, there isn't a sidewalk, a walkway, a bike path, or trail for our families to transit safely without fear of being hit by oncoming traffic. There also isn't a sense of confidence within our communities that drivers would not strike someone someday due to pedestrians not having a safe place to walk down that street. Surely, our families would take a much safer route if it was available. As a solution, I propose that a scope be done to figure out how to construct an affordable asphalt-paved walkway, sidewalk, bike path, or trail. Fortunately, there is a significant amount of idle land and unused land in the middle and on the two sides of that street that are between our two communities. A sidewalk would be the first priority for safety. I cannot express that enough. However, if I may add, I'd like to propose a slight extension to the width of a sidewalk, which would also allow room for runners and bikers to accomplish their fitness goals in a safer environment and on a paved path. This proposal could also contribute to a better culture of fitness in our area. I do ask that you keep in mind, this proposed solution should significantly reduce the recurring cost of regular grounds maintenance in the area due to less grass and terrain needed to be maintained and cut. Thank you for your help and support, as I believe this solution will positively affect over five hundred residents in our two communities. I believe it's a needed win for Portsmouth and our entire Churchillan area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Werner?
Yes, sir.
I support what you're saying. I'm very familiar with that area, and I think it is a safety concern. I would also add, Hedges Row Lane, it's heavily traveled by students headed to Churchillan Primary School. And the email you sent us, I think the mayor responded to the city manager in a positive note about the need for sidewalks in the areas that don't have them due to safety concerns. I'm particularly concerned about the need in school zones and communities where there's no other place to walk. Twin Pines Road, at least down that way, there is no sidewalk, and people literally have to jog and walk out in the street, which, that's a very narrow road, so that's dangerous in itself. So I support... So I support that. Hopefully, the City Manager can get back with us. I'm sure my colleagues are supportive as well. But now's the right time to bring that up, going into the, the budget time of year, and I, I think we need a plan to address that need and some other needs. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Moody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a timeframe in which we could look forward to either following up on this matter or speaking with the City Manager in regard? Any type of timeframe?
Dr. Patton, would you, or get your contact information and provide that information for you?
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you get somebody to?
Mrs. Hope will get that information.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Godolgi Yotroski, excuse me, sir, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. I have some comments on the recent announced project for Crawford Bay and some other items. Let me start with the Crawford Bay announcement. The phrasing of the press release that I saw on the website would lead us to believe that there is already a selected contractor for building a casino and multi-use development at that location. This before any legislation has emerged from the session of the General Assembly, and without any request for proposals, so that we can evaluate competing plans. The other concern I have about this is, our policies and procedures for the minority women and small business program that have been worked on previously have not been adopted. So depending on the pace at which this project moves forward, it's possible that we would have no guarantees, no matter whom we select, to do such a project, that there would be aspirational goals included, unless the project takes the form of a PPEA, in which case the state goals would be invoked. So I think we need to slow down in terms of where we're headed with this. I want to ensure, first of all, that if there is a casino to be built, that every qualified provider of, of the construction and development services has an opportunity to get in, and that whomever may be chosen will be bound by our MBWE guidelines. So I'd like to know when those policies and procedures are going to be in place. Secondly, we have a poverty study in progress. It was one of the big ideas that came out of the City Council retreat from a couple of years ago. I would like that poverty study to address the impacts of casinos on impoverished residents of areas that have them. I've read some disturbing accounts of what happened in Atlantic City after the casino boom and bust that occurred there. And the indications I've seen are that Atlantic City's poverty levels are worse than before the original casino boom. This is not something that Portsmouth would want to have as a consequence. Third, where's the CAFER? It's January twenty-second. It should have been in our hands by now. New councilmembers Battle and Glover, you know, there are three million dollars that you don't have any say over, because the legacy members of council appropriated them from the general fund even before the CAFER was made public. CAFER's not out there on the website as of this afternoon. Where is it? So any money that's left over from the last fiscal year, the public has no say in how it's re-appropriated either. I'd like to see that CAFER. Lastly, at your upcoming retreat, I think it would behoove you all to include a parliamentary procedure workshop. I've not seen one done, but again, new members of council, I want to tell you, in observing the legacy members, they would definitely benefit from it if you would not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Michelle Smith. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and other City Council members. I'm up here today because this weekend, I had the opportunity, initially, we were going to look at the Park and Ride. We came across a situation with the tires that were at the Park and Ride in Cavalier Manor. And honestly, praise God, the way things happen, if you look on the news, go on YouTube, you'll see that the tires have been taken away. I just happen to have seen City Councilman Shannon Glover, and once we went out there and discussed, and Wavy Ten came by, and some other citizens came by, those were taken. But one of the main focal points that I'm concerned about in Portsmouth, specifically Cavalier Manor, is the Park and Ride that has been vacant since the late nineties, I want to say. And I think it can be used in such a productive manner. In two thousand, two thousand seventeen, I believe, it was, we had to come up with a petition, because an alleged, it was being presented for a trash transfer, basically a dump to be put in Park and Ride there in Cavalier Manor, and also, they were suggesting in Truxton. And I think it would be such a positive element if we started another Park and Ride. With the matters going on, with the tolls, people are really, really struggling. And I have lived in a DMV. I've lived in the DC, Maryland, Virginia area, and taking the train, taking the bus is a marvelous thing, and be it that we have the Merrimack, we have the Midtown, we have the Downtown, and we have another Park and Ride established, which there we have it. We just have to really clear it if we're going to use it, because we have one in Portsmouth, but we don't, that's, we only have one. And I think that that would just really be a positive element that'll make the neighborhood more marketable, because we have, our elders are passing away, but we still have property. If people can say, hmm, I can get to work and not go through so much financial strain, I think that that would be really positive. So I really submit this idea, so that it can possibly be researched, so we can have something that is going to make Portsmouth more marketable, reduce the stress and strain of people trying to get to work, because me having lived in the DMV, it's a blessing when you just on the bus, or on the train, get into work, get off, and come back. And the area could be cleared, where it could be more visible, so that we can see what's going on, the way technology is, the way the cameras are. I think it really needs to be researched, so it could possibly be an element, again, of Portsmouth. And I think that's all I have. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.